You couldn't drag me under that chair.
I'll go sit in the audience, I'm good.
And next question. Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy that fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? And will the proposed action impact existing A, public, private water supplies?
We don't know.
So when I talk about storm runoff, we're talking about water supply.
Drinking water.
The drinking water.
Well, I'm just saying. If there's wells in that area, there wouldn't be one. There is none. Correct.
To that question, will the proposed action impact existing public, private wastewater treatment facilities? Will the proposed action impair the character of fall or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
Are there any?
Oh yeah, there's flora and fauna all over the place.
It's already there? Yeah, you know, it's, it's really rainwater, it's not... That wouldn't be a change.
No, except for it's... We're talking about having open grasslands to areas that have contaminants in it that will turn into fertilizer, someplace down the road, hopefully.
Did you read the question again?
Sure. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
Just while you're just gonna have some runoff going down into the Lake Champlain and to people back here.
How do you know?
Yeah, it's gonna go downhill.
Assuming everything's liquid. Like it doesn't go into the ground, the ground isn't enough to absorb what's there, right? That's the assumption, but we don't have any evidentiary facts, so...
And something's changed, I mean, the rain's still...
The rain's still gonna fall, yes. So we're looking at nowhere too small, right?
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
I don't see it.
I don't see it either.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
Not a doctor.
Do not have a P S.
If we assume that the manure is being taken care of, then no.
Based on what's been proposed to us, right?
Yeah, based on what's been proposed, it's nowhere too small.
That is part two.
So without that, we could declare a negative declaration.
Based off your remediation of your one large item, yes.
I make a motion that we declare a negative seeker.
Second. And show hands and roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Basil La Forest.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexandro.
Yes.
And Patrick Duane.
Yes.
So there's the seekers, now you go back to the balancing test.
Just quit, I'm just trying to keep you moving.
All right, now we're into the realizing reasonable return on the problem and substantial as shown by competent financial evidence. Your finance guy go first.
Oh, now I am. Am I arguing against it or not? None's been provided.
Which would mean that there's no reason to go forward.
That's your call.
I had the first one.
If I'm just one of five, everybody would have to agree to that statement.
Yeah, I agree.
Mary Ann agreed. Everybody agrees that we don't get past the first one.
So the issue is you can ask for postponement because you have to meet those balancing tests and you gotta show us that, we have to have reasonable evidence that, that there's no reasonable return that you can get out of that land.
Okay.
By doing what you wanna do, that's not... And you haven't provided us with anything to show financial hardship for the...
For all the things that would be allowed there, so you could subdivide that.
Subdivide it or use it for crops.
Well, you'd have to meet these four, you'd have to meet these things and look them over, so if you want time to do that, we can ask for a postponement, a continuance.
But there's still also three other questions that have to be answered.
That's what I just told her. But he's saying that we don't have to go forward because the first one didn't.
Can't make the first one.
I'm just saying, if you wanna continue and so you can look at those four things and see if you can provide us with some things. It's gonna be approved either way, but right now we don't have it, so we couldn't approve it.
All right, postponement, and just basically show all the uses I can right now.
You'd have, well, you'd have to go by this. They're describing their continuing application.
Yeah, all right, so...
You're asking, you don't say, you're asking to table.
You know how long you want? Continuance for tables, is that?
And just for unclearance, that's for appeal twenty-three, twenty-four, and that's just for the agriculture use, because we have two. So the other one is also just a barn. Or we even say it's a barn, accessory structure, sorry.
And so you get the use variance.
Well, that would be up to her.
So this is where she's at, right? So accessory structure is only an area variance because of the size of, she decides if I don't get the use, I don't bring my horses here, I still like to have this big barn to store my, my stuff in. She can continue on with that variance tonight.
Structure, not farm.
Structure, sorry, accessory structure, she might not want it that size.
If she doesn't, they wouldn't need the variance, right?
How do you wanna proceed on your second request for the structure?
Table what?
You carry this one first.
I think I would vote just to be safe and figure stuff out from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, so reasonable return, so am I gonna be comparing like if I can go put crops out there versus like my...
Whether the use is allowed in there.
You gotta show why those...
We gotta go through every single use that's allowed.
We can do single ferry out there.
Financially out there.
Accessory uses, agricultural uses, daycare centers, da-da-da, list goes on and on.
Okay. All right.
How long would you like to continue?
I don't know.
Well, I'm pretty sure you're gonna want at least sixty days, because... We'd have to have the information next week or next month, so...
Okay, so, maybe ninety, um, I guess.
So for continuation, then, we're tabling it for ninety days.
Make a motion that we continue this, or table the, uh...
These two variants, a both. Yes.
Well, I'm doing one at a time.
You got a motion down there, Mary Ann, and we got a second.
The second one or the first one?
The second.
The second.
So a continuance for ninety days.
So motion first one.
Let's just do the first, she needs a marker for the first, first.
Okay, so you...
So Basil be the most.
I made the motion to, the use.
Show hands, and then roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Basil La Forest.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexandro.
Yes.
Patrick Duane.
Yes.
And Mary Ann made the motion for the second one.
Second one, continuing.
Second. That, just second that.
Okay.
We gotta show hands, and we have a roll call vote again.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Basil La Forest.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexandro.
Yes.
Patrick Duane.
Yes.
So the same thing that, uh, did before you, as Alan alluded, we got submission dates and then the hearing dates, all of it's right on our website. So you have to have it twenty days before the meeting, so we publish it, we can get it down. You can get it before the ninety days, just follow that guideline on when it has to be submitted, so that we can get it to the board members in time. All this right on our website.
Review it.
That's good.
Thank you.
Do you two break?
Yep. We'll take five minutes.
Right, right. We'll have to pick up.
Great. Is that any clearer on yours? Next one's new, like you have to...
Doesn't have that recording?
Answer your question.
You sure it's recording?
You got a backup video on that problem?
Right.
He's getting sweaty.
She can't listen. Yeah. Yeah.
Once it's built.
It was when we first got this.
It's more water. I didn't call that. Aspect building.
It's a lot cooler over here.
Oh yeah, it's cooler over here.
You wanna sit over here?
Um, it's pretty cool over here, yeah.
It's gonna get colder. Not in a minute. It's just the area.
That's what we're talking about, you know, from their field.
I just don't like...
I said, hello, I'm around two, three years, I'm not telling you.
She can grow her crops. Just like some chicken, her crops are there. It's all I have, because we don't, we don't expect that.
And they'll think for the entire person. Put it on your...
Yeah, I just...
You have two minutes for application. I've been by, I got stopped right in front of your house.
Really?
That burner. Burner, trash. I was there watching that thing burn. How those guys are gonna be alive in ten years is beyond us. The dudes that are standing there. Everything. Right in it. Yeah.
I hear it, here's the back, I can't see.
That's gonna let a lot of light in.
Well, I can tell you something. Issues to...
Come on, yourself, I'm trying to stay awake.
She was giving it to me.
You missed it, we were eating our pizza.
Dave is like, don't buy it.
I can wait. The worst for...
But the whole thing, you would've been in it.
You can't wait. Anything else you can...
On the outside, so you have, entertain in the back.
I've sat through four, five hours. Can't leave, Andrew Bangier got it.
And then the stairwell.
Roger.
Yeah, bullshit it too. We're just gonna have food trucks in, no restaurants, no anything, because we may have... Yeah.
Okay, people. Here we go.
The gavel, man, she's there.
I wasn't kidding, bang the gavel, oh, we go. You're invoking... Hello.
You're just giving us an applause?
Number two, three, two, eight. Okay, next appeal, uh, we consider old business, because it was heard last month, an area variance request from Robert Dominic located at eighteen sixty-four Route Three to be allowed to keep a previously constructed twelve-by-fifteen storage shed in the front yard, which does not meet the fifty-foot front yard setback and in R-two residential district encroaching fifteen feet in the roadside, in the front yard leaving thirty-five foot to the property line. Brett's got some pictures that he would love to show you guys.
We have aerial view here, we have Katyville Gulf, which we previously spoke about over here. Mr. Dominic's property is located here on Route Three. He is in the R-two district, as you can see in the yellow. This is a little bit closer aerial view. Today I was out there, I took a picture, this is how it looks today, and this is the plot plan provided by Mr. Dominic. Mr. Dominic, it's all yours.
Not much I can say, I, I made a mistake, I didn't... I was building that to sell. I see a lot of a marketplace, and I thought I would build one that I would call high-end, because if it's the hip roof. And I didn't, I didn't give it a thought about getting the permit, because I was selling it. So when I built it, thinking it was a high-end. It's really higher than what can be shipped or cropped. And I, I got in touch with a couple of guys, which could nearly fifteen feet high, and it can't be. So I kinda built myself out of the market as far as selling it, so in the meantime, like...
Now, there, I believe there's your topography of the area, your land falls off in the back of you. So you couldn't put it into the back of the house.
It's pretty steep.
You couldn't put it in the back of the house.
It's a steep ravine back there. It's a steep ravine behind the house.
It is, yeah, it is. Maybe I, I had thought about, because I wanted to sell it, because I'm gonna build in the front yard, but then, not knowing how long it would take to sell it, so I, where I put it was the opposite of the east, the place to put it, because I had to put it in some small trees.
Okay. Open, did this go down to the county? Was this one the one, so we gotta read into the record thing?
We did, I think we did that last...
I did last month.
Yes. Last month, okay. Public hearing portion, the meeting is now open, anybody here like to speak to this matter? I'd see anybody who opposed the public hearing portion reading and move back to comments from the board member. Or I can do the balancing test, whichever way you wanna do it.
What you chair and just wanna point out, you can see there where the concrete passage right there. This, um, shed, accessory structure.
Yeah.
Sets even with the front of the house, it doesn't protrude from the front of the house. The front of the house is a pre-existing non-conforming setback, yeah.
All right, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, we just looked at that, saying that the ravine in the back doesn't allow them to relocate. Undesirable change in neighborhood character to nearby properties, there's really not too many nearby properties there. Whether the request is substantial, and as just pointed out, the shed is no further to the front than the actual house is. And whether the request will have adverse fiscal or environmental effects, and I don't see any of those.
Going back to the, I think it was the first one, whether it can...
Be done some other way.
Done some other way. It's my understanding that the property doesn't start tapering off in the back until you're behind the house, is that correct? So...
There's a stream.
Right, but the width of the house is still level, I think, on that left side of the house.
Yeah.
So, I don't wanna say that it can't have any other option, because there is an option to move it back probably twenty-five...
Would be that he would have to cut down a bunch of trees and nothing else to do that.
The option is he has the ability to move it back further, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm not sure what it takes to get it there.
But it's still not any further closer to the road than the actual houses.
That's all I'm saying.
I know, I know, I'm just saying that...
I'm just bringing it up for the first answer that you said, that there is an option, is all I'm saying.
Anybody have any questions or if you'd like to make a motion?
How difficult would it be to push it back?
Well, I'd like to address that. From the, okay, the way that the shed is, it's where it's set, on the north end, very north end of the shed, I think it's eighteen feet, and it starts to sit down.
Okay.
And it's very terrible to the river, so that, I, it's really not an option to...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, I think it's significant that it's even with the house.
Okay, so we wanna make a motion then to say that, grant the variance?
Yeah, I, I will make a motion.
Okay, show hands, and roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Basil La Forest.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexandro. Patrick Duane.
Yes.
You're awesome.
You got it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Mr. Dominic. Sometime next week, come back in and take the, uh, the property.
Next appeal is one thirty-seven State Route three seventy-four, a use variance request to allow to place a twelve-by-twenty-four free shed, plea, refab shed on a property without a principal structure, but is not allowed in an R-two district. We got some pictures that Mr. Baker would love to show you guys.
And there he'll do three seventy-four, we got a hot end of town back up here, would again be Katyville Gulf. This is, I'm sorry, I, I misspeak, this is the Katyville Fire Department, this is Church Road, property located over here on three seventy-four. It is in the R-two district. Aerial view of the property, you can see that it extends this way, and also goes back over here along three seventy-four. This is a view of today. And this is what we have, it's off to you, sir.
Uh, my name's Red Alpino, I purchased this property with my wife, I want to say this is the beginning of last year. Our plan is, because of the acreage, to possibly build our dream home on the property. Me not being very smart, I put up the shed, it's my fault, I didn't think that a temporary shed would need a permit, that's my fault, that's why I'm here tonight. Asking for some forgiveness on this. If I remember correctly from the paperwork that I submitted. If I had submitted the paperwork that I did, and it was approved, it was three years, I believe, if we built our house, I think it was okay to have the shed. I don't, I don't remember exactly, but that's what I'm here for.
What you're referring to is, he asked the question, you know, what, what normally happens, I said, normally, the board has granted, if they grant this variance like that, there's a building permit involved, usually has no more than three years for us to build that house. The shed would be legal, or if he doesn't, the shed's gotta come out.
Right.
You've done that in the past.
Yes, sir.
Have you already applied?
No, sir, no, I, I, the law, the law was inclusive, but it...
Yeah.
I've taken now a little bit of it, now to try to clear it out.
Yeah.
Personal issues, sister, pastor, laybours, you know, family things, finances, you know, we, we bought the property now. We started saving for the property, we're gonna try to save up now that we're getting back into certain things, uh, you know, start that process, because I wanna follow the, I wanna do everything that's booked, I'm not from here, I moved up ten years ago and I moved up here, I just, I wanna do whatever.
So it's gonna fall?
Hi, no. Listen, Mary Ann, we bet you're walking off, Ryan, I'm already...
Just trying to help you out, no.
Okay.
When you look at this, this is our problem with this, that's a contractor's storage yard, if you look at that, not only using it for a shed, there's trucks, there's commercial vehicles, there's commercial trailers, it's a commercial use in a residential district, not only is it just a shed, this is in, was RP Mechanicals?
Yeah, that's my business.
That's a contractor's storage yard in a residential district, so it's not just a shed that it's being used for.
When do you decide if it's a storage facility or somebody's constructing something? So if he had a permit to build a house, because the lot next door is the same thing.
There's not a permit.
No, but I'm just asking if, what Alan was saying, that if he puts a permit in, he's allowed to keep the building, then the rest of this would not be an issue.
Well, the contractors, the other trailers, trailers, stickered up vehicles.
But I'm saying if he's there working on...
If they're working with that, that is, that's not the case, though, it's in front of us, not a permit, not an house permit, it's only for a shed.
My question is, so there's not a variance here for the storage yard?
I only have one question, too.
Sorry, it's not an issue.
You have paperwork in this.
What do you mean? Yeah, it's right here.
I can't find it.
All right, you don't. It's got...
So my question is, with the overhead view, what are we looking at? You see, you know, different things, are they trucks, are they trailers, where's the shed, is it, is it a wooden shed, is it a, you said it's a temporary shed, so is it a metal structure with a canvas all around?
No, it was like an, it was like an armor shed, I built it, it was an armor shed.
So what is, point out what these things are.
Sure, absolutely.
To just declare...
So this is, this is, this is the shed right here.
Okay.
And these are trailers, this is a, uh, just a truck, um, this is a dump truck that I bought for next to nothing, for, for the property. The hole in the ground to, you know...
What is that, is it?
That, that is actually a bus that I bought off of somebody to store stuff in for the property, so that way when we do get moving, the stuff that's here for storage can be sold and gotten rid of. Granted, yes, I do have some of my business stuff there, I have a trailer there that's logoed up, I don't, I don't have any vehicles or anything there that's, that's logoed up, I do have one trailer there that's, has my, it's in one of the pictures, you can just...
So all those things, they're all registered and...
No, not all of them are, no, they, they, they were bought for storage, some of them are, yes, some of them are not. The two black ones right there are not, they were bought for, for storage and stuff.
We're only talking about the building.
Yeah.
Right, but just curious as to what we're looking at when we see that overhead view, what's, you know... Because it wasn't specified, like, oh, look at this, this is where the building is.
Yeah, I, I know from past experiences that granting things like that has sort of bit us in the past.
You had to then have them taken down.
So the issue is he doesn't have a permit for a house?
We don't. We're, we're starting with, with, started with the land, we don't, we don't even have...
Right, no, I'm just going back to what, what Alan was saying, that in the past, we've allowed the accessory structure during the construction phase, and it would be allowed, so that's what I'm driving at that. If the stipulation is there, that within three years, the house has to be built or it's taken down and everything's off there, well, well, I guess there'd have to be another argument about the other thing that we're not discussing. No, we're not, we're just here to talk.
Okay. So, I opened up a public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter? And I can't remember, I think it went down to the county.
Yeah, went down to the county for two thirty-nine M referral and nine O in favor of local issue nine five twenty-two.
And closed the public hearing portion of the meeting and opened up this one.
So my understanding is if they, if you were to get a building permit, then it would be just a matter of granting a variance for one year at a time, right?
No, I have it in three years, I think Alan's...
In the past, you guys have set, you know, precedence about, we'll give you three years to get a building permit and get, under construction, get it built, whatever, you've done that, I think, once or twice.
Sunning side drive.
But he doesn't have a house building permit, he already has a shed.
What I just mentioned.
So if, you guys can't do it, because he doesn't have one or five yet. You know, and it doesn't sound like he's gonna be ready for one for a while, because he hasn't had the money for it yet.
Well, that's up to whether he says he wants to comply or not.
Right, yeah.
I mean, if, if the issue is before us to say, we're willing to grant the variance, provided that he go down and get the building permit that starts the clock ticking, then that's the only thing I see in front of us.
Right. And the one thing this board doesn't wanna do is, what you're asking for is an accessory structure out primary, then it becomes this, this is exactly what zoning doesn't want.
Right, we've had people have to tear down their buildings when they didn't. Like Provost, right?
Yeah, so Provost and Sunnyside Drive, those were the two that Mr. Hale is referring to, and we did them on a yearly basis, and they came back and they got extensions for them, both of them failed to comply, both of them came down. Uh, both of them, we had issues with accessory structures, then Provost with the dozers, the excavators, all this commercial stuff came there, kind of what we have here. Complaints from the neighbors, got that, Sunnyside was just financially, it, it just didn't go.
Right.
So then he took it down and it sold, or, I think they, I'm, I'm not positive.
He's selling this.
Some of his slab there, yeah.
Yes, the slab is left, the structure is gone, right.
Yeah, I, I don't even know if it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a.
It worked out.
There you go. Uh, I guess I asked it someplace, who knows, probably did. Oh, that is the one.
It's a use variance, according to that.
Yeah, this isn't the one.
Yeah, it's not the one.
This is Robert Latham, the next one, I have that.
Do you think that was the one, sorry?
No.
So, well, it's only in the, in the cover letter.
In the cover letter. I haven't lost, so.
Use variance, you gotta do a secret variance.
So we, we do have a secret too. Oops, none of you guys have it?
Nope, they're only not, sorry, I thought we did.
So, we can do a secret, because I have it in front of me. Might get fired a week early.
You only hope.
Don't fake her day.
Go for it, daddy, go for it.
Not starting out.
Sorry about that, too many hours.
Uh, will a proposed cre, or will the proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use planning or zoning regulations? No or small impact may occur, moderate, moderate to large impact may occur.
Did you say in large impact?
Oh, it's against the land use right now, right?
Yeah, but is it large, or is it just?
No, the, the variance, is, is the variance request, is that?
Will a proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
Yes, it does.
No or small impact or moderate to large impact may occur. Are we in agreement with small?
I am. I see.
I guess.
I understand you have four to one, right?
I got it.
So, four to one, so that'll be a no. Will the proposed action result in change in the use or intensity of use of the land? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land? No to small impact or moderate to large? Good. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact may occur or moderate to large? Right here, all no to smalls? Will the proposed action have an envi, an, an impact in environmental characteristics that's caused by the establishment of a CEA? We don't have any of those, so I'm gonna help you guys vote for that one.
Appreciate it.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic affecting existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No to small or moderate to large?
Small.
Yep. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation, renewable energy opportunities? No or small or moderate to large?
No to small.
Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies? Or public, private water, or wastewater treatment facilities, utilities? No to small or moderate to large?
Small or small.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the importance, historical, archaeological, architecture, or aesthetic resources? No to small or moderate to large?
No to small.
Okay, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, air quality, flora, or fauna? No to small or moderate to large?
No to small.
Be negative.
Somebody makes a motion to declare a negative secret?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Show hands, roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Basil La Forest.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexandro.
Yes.
Patrick Duhane.
Yep.
So that portion's done, but we have no financial information?
We have none. It was. I have a shed before the house, safe storage plan to build new home, can, complete few years. I'm starting with nothing and no money needed, few years, my plan is to build uh, my forever home on lot two, uh, number two, I have a house now that want to build my forever home. Newer home is on our, our dreams, the little property, need a few years to finding which is time. Number three is the areas residential and is where we want to build forever home, need shed for safe storage while working on property, the shed will save home for transfer of tools and et cetera. The shed will not alter the surrounding areas of the residential, number four, as our plans for a few years to the home, we need time for a new home while we still pay everyday bills, only so much income per year, plus trying to build new home, shed will help us storage for safe tools, time and travel of loading them up, also items getting lost. Yeah, that's what we have.
We can get that to true.
You know, this is one of those things, right, he's not trying to change the use of that area because what he's trying to do is change the order in which he's allowed to go, so we talked about financial hardship. I don't know, I mean.
Still gotta be proven.
Yeah, but that's up to you guys to figure out, you know, what this financial hardship is.
Alternatively, we'd have to ask him to tear it down, go get a permit, and then he put it there? I mean, like a variance, based on our historical precedent?
As long as the permit he got was for a house and the shed.
Right. How big's the shed?
Uh, twelve by twenty-four.
So the sh, those trailers, they can't, couldn't have stored that stuff? Because you said they're for storage.
Correct, some of those, uh, some of those trailers have, um, have bought now, uh, another HVAC company uh, in the process of this, of me starting the business or running a business, and I have, you know, just materials and stuff in, in those trailers. Um, so it's, those trailers are multi-use for personal and, like, you know, my own, and you know, when it comes to, 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 you know, the shed, i- if, uh, whatever I have to do, I, I have to do, but if if I have some time to, to get the, you know, pla, I mean, we don't even have plans for a house, you know, we, when we start that role, if we have that, those three years, that's what I'm looking for from today till, till end, to, to make that happen, and that's definitely what I'll do. Um, I just, I did things backwards when I showed it.
I wanted to point out, point out, because, because he brought it up, not that, because we knew about it. So he's pointing out these sheds, right, so, or these, uh, trailers, so if he's got a trailer that's registered and not stickered up with his business, fine, he put his trailer on his property, if he's got a trailer that's not stickered up and it's not registered, that's not a shed. He's got a trailer, any trailer on there, registered, not registered, and it's got his business on there, that's a contractor's storage yard. Okay, so, when you, when you start looking at what kind of decision you wanna make, you may have to imply some conditions here on him about his excessive trailers he has on that property.
Well, what if we go down to Century Twenty-One and they've got their van in their parking lot, is that considered a?
If it's registered, we don't look at it. It's private, private, it's.
Well, you just said if his was registered and stickered.
If it's registered, stickered.
Right, but Century Twenty-One's van is registered and stickered, but there.
In a commercial district, that's, that's their business that's allowed. That business that's allowed there, that's not a home occupation there, first, there's no home.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, his, his business doesn't, uh, doesn't fall into.
The storage yard, even though it's in a commercial district, doesn't matter?
It's not a commercial district.
I'm talking about Century Twenty-One, I'm just trying to make an apples, apples comparison.
Commercial district, you have commercial properties.
What's that?
Commercial district, you can have B part cars.
Commercial must, they show different.
Century Twenty-One, I don't get like Century Twenty-One putting up.
I'm just saying, because you were saying it was a storage yard, I'm just trying to make.
Because he's got, right.
Whether somebody's got a, any commercial vehicle that's stickered, and that's one way that they don't have to worry about putting up signs. That's what they do, but you're saying it's different on the commercial side? It's not considered a storage yard?
Uh, uh, you know, contractor's storage yard usually doesn't have any buildings, but it has equipment and raw materials stored there, so they call it contractor's storage yard. If they have a building there, that may be office building, you know, that commercial business as well as a storage yard.
I think Alan was trying to say, if there was a house there, he had five black trailers, we wouldn't know. But if they're RP Mechanicals or whatever, like, say if you're in a residential district and you start bringing your commercial vehicles home, is that what you're trying to get her to? Then that's not allowed in a residential district to bring all the commercial.
Even if he had a home use occupation?
That's totally different, if you had a variance, or if it was an allowed home occupation, but Alan's saying that RP Mechanicals, HVAC, whatever it is, plumbing, heating isn't a resident, uh, allowed use in a residential district, home occupation in a residential district. Did I?
Right, I mean, if he did it by himself or whatever, I think that falls under the home occupation, but if he has employees, then you just park yourself out of it. But you have to have a home.
Right, occupation.
But if the guy owns the home and he has a company, and if his van says his company's name on it, he can park it in his yard.
Well, that's the horse right now, doesn't, we're not talking about.
Yeah.
I guess it's.
If there is home occupation.
Huh?
There is allowed, like, what, uh, contractor's saying, there is home occupation, so allows one outside of the person in the home not to outside display X, Y, and Z. We do have, uh, stipulations for that. But we're only talking about a shed.
We're only talking shed.
Anything you'd like to say, Matthew?
I think you hit all the high points, this is, it's a property that I think is very quickly gonna become more and more what you're looking at. What the town is trying to get away from and.
Right, yeah.
What are we talking about, a shed, in front of us? Otherwise, they'd have to bring them to the, the storage yard.
Right.
But now the two trailers, it's, it's sheds because they're not registered. And this being used to storage, almost in front of us is what you're told, but, yeah, right.
And if he were to register them, that would take him off the plate.
I'm just trying to focus on what we're.
Well, a lot of the charge of this is, uh, use variance, where you have to do financial evidence. Actually, you have it.
Yeah, I gotta check him, yeah, he got a har, car before the horse. It's kind of like a fix-it ticket.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're just putting a hardship on one person to say, tear down your shed because you're on house. I have a problem with that. Because that's the only thing that would fix this, is if he had a house permit.
What, what he's always saying is.
He needs to go get it.
Yeah, to, to request a table of the matter, and you can go out and get your house permit, or come up with financial evidence and.
You're already saying that you're not expecting it for three years.
I was just giving myself some time to, to do so, like, you know, if I, if I was ready to go, and we had, you know, we had bank approvals, and we had, you know, architectural designs, we were, you know, we were ready to go, I'd look at it and be like, great, but I, I need time to get to, to that step first.
Well, we can't get to that step until we get the shed figured out.
That, and that's. No, and that's what I was hoping for.
That's where we're at, so what we're saying is, you can say that you want to do a table of the matter for now, either get yourself some financial information, know why that shed would be okay to have there now, certainly. And or, uh. Just to say you're gonna be building in the blah, blah, blah future, you would have.
Do you have any plans for that? You got a building permit?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's.
I mean, you could go out and get yourself out of the magazine or whatever, this is my plan.
Still speaking.
Yeah, it's for the board too, it doesn't sound like there's a, the apples can be able to rectify this anytime soon, and you've got a property that's not compliant, so we're I think just gonna keep kicking that roll, so, either tell him what he needs, or take a vote on the application that's part of you, but I mean, the ninety day continues means you're basically allowing this property to run out of compliance for ninety days on the hope that something that there's an application, then the code's part of her building.
Yeah, that doesn't seem like a reasonable. I think it's up to the advocate to, to, to make that, that leave of the board for us to either decide or not, though. So, I don't know, I don't maybe we need to table it for my own purpose to try to decide it, because I, I can't get it wrapped around my head.
Inside the questions we've been asked, right? We're gonna have to hold first then, I guess.
Well, to check in the next situation, we got a permit, the shed would.
Yeah.
He's already done it in the past, as Alan said, so I don't know how we change that now, just because, I don't know.
Yeah, you wanna make the motion?
Huh?
Do you wanna make that motion?
I can, if you want, I, I'll make a motion to, um, I don't know, how many day, uh, how many days do you need to get a permit?
I, I don't know, if I was given a year to do so, to get architectural designs together and put a house up and, and, you know, get financing done and all that, that would be probably very realistic.
Yeah, but I'm talking about get the, the, to, to apply for a permit.
I'll be honest, I don't know what that entails, I don't know, I'm pretty sure I have to bring down stamp drawings, which are, which I'm, you know, I, I now I feel kind of rushed on that I would have to do so to probably pay a few thousand dollars or a couple thousand dollars for architectural designs to get a permit, which, I'm if, if I can bring down and, and find a loophole to, to bring down the stand plans, to get a building permit, to, to, you know, hold up what I've got, you know, into the shed, what I've got in it, blah, 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 I, I would do that, absolutely, but.
I don't know what it lets entail to put a building permit, you'd have to ask these guys.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Setbacks, you'd have to have, uh, septic approval, every, you're almost forcing them in to do the wrong thing right now.
No, I'm just saying, he doesn't know what it takes to get a permit, and someone asks him, I don't know what it.
Septic system, full stamp plans, uh, help, help the board approve on a, on a septic system. Uh, full stand plans with an architect or engineer stamp on there showing, uh, front yard, side yard, and compliances, that's what we require, so, yeah, your couple thousand bucks, minimum.
Well, if you make the motion to approve the shed and give them one year to, to make it, it's a condition, I guess.
I'm not willing to make that motion.
Okay.
They, they just put any building, we had to give them another extension, another, you know.
Well, on three years, and then they have to tear it down.
Maybe make a motion to, to nine.
Whatever.
I'll make a motion to.
And I'll send it.
Can you have a show of hands?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Basil La Forest.
No.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexandro. Patrick Duhane.
No.
Okay, so now what do we wanna put for time, timeframe?
We denied it.
It's denied.
But he's got a set up.
Well, how long does he have to take to shut down? Or remove it from the property?
That's, sorry. Was it portable, did it get dropped off by like an Amish person, or did you build it?
It's, I, I built it on catwalks.
Okay, so how long would it realistically take you to remove that?
I would have to have something more like a tow truck or something, when it's asset properly called.
Sixty days?
Something, I'll take ninety if I can, at this point, because now I.
These guys.
I, I, I gotta renew something now, so I'll update all the time that I can get to try to figure it out.
I know you're in a rough spot, so I, I guess.
I'm just trying to go into the community and try to, you know, do this and that, I picked the backfire from a shed, so.
So, Roger, you're saying ninety?
Yeah.
Ninety days is it?
Ninety days.
Right.
That's where we're at.
It was over this.
There.
All right, next one?
Next one, appeal Robert Latham, thirty-two Forest Home Road, area variance to construct a twenty-four by twenty, four hundred eighty square, uh, square foot addition onto existing accessory building, which I think is twelve hundred and ten square feet, having a total accessory square footage of two thousand eight hundred and six, which is larger than a hundred percent of the building size, it's not allowed in an R-two district. And part V of it, it would not meet the fifty-foot front yard setback requiring, required in an R-two district, encroaching twenty feet into the front yard setback, leaving thirty feet to the property line. I think Brett's got some pictures.
Mr. Chair, just wanna point out, after further review, your piece of paper that you have, have it as a different description. Mr. Chair, just wanna point out, after further review, your piece of paper that you have, have it as a different description for the B part, so we've corrected it. I think yours says like two point five feet or something. Actually, what's on the screen? It's actually what's on the screen now.
So you'll be taking two votes to.
So, this is Forest Home Road, this is Patterson Rutherford up here, this is room three seventy-four. You'll see that it's in the R two district. This is the aerial view of the home, this is the home here, they have a shed out back. Structure they're proposing to add an addition to is this garage over here. This is the street view. This is a view, I believe this is provided by the homeowner, this, um, is from the home to the garage. This is also from the road to the proposed garage to have the work. And that is another view. That is the reverse view of the drive from the home to the garage.
So the actual home is on the far left?
Correct.
So it's just a storage.
Go right back there. This is, this is the primary structure, the home. There's a shed here. This would be the structure in question. Mr. Latham, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you. My name is Robert Latham. I live at thirty-two Forest Home Road in Morrisonville with my wife Sherry. Uh, we've lived there eleven years. The reason we need a variance is because we would like to rebuild an overhang slash carport onto the existing barn, what we'll call the building barn, that does not meet current zoning laws. The barn has an existing overhang, but is only partially covering one vehicle. We would like to rebuild it so that it is wider and longer and can accommodate two vehicles. The overhang extension would extend, I'm sorry. The overhang would extend an additional seven and a half feet beyond the existing building in front. What, it would be, it would be the area of the cement. That's all it would be. And the seven and a half feet, you can see where the cement comes out a little bit, uh, from the building, kind of right in the center there. So anyway, uh, seven and a half feet beyond the existing building, over the current driveway and cement pad. The end of the structure would be thirty-three feet from the property line or fifty-five and a half feet from the middle of the road. Uh, we live on the rural road with only three neighbors, all of whom live on the opposite side. Uh, we get very little traffic and this shouldn't have no adverse effect on or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood, because our driveway will still remain pretty much the same as it is. Adding the extended overhang to the barn seems the best solution financially and the least intrusive, rather than adding another building, which would increase our square footage of our accessory buildings. We considered adding to the current one-car garage that is on the property. But we couldn't add to the, add on two parking spots to that garage without it looking out of proportion. Plus, we would have to remove a decades-old grapevine and lose a good portion of the lot. We didn't make, it didn't make sense and we would be altering the character of the property itself. And then just to add on, next year, we intend to put vinyl siding on the barn. Uh, so this is kind of our immediate project to put the overhang on if, if, if the variance is approved and then, uh, put some new siding on it. Just to improve the looks of the barn, the property, and the neighbors should have no complaints.
Mr. Latham, you made a, a comment there, just wanna get it corrected in the beginning, you said, uh, it was fifty-five feet from the center of the road but thirty-three feet from the, your property line?
Yeah.
Okay. But normally the center of the road to your property line is twenty-five feet, would only be thirty feet. So that's what I'm trying to figure, because, because now you're asking for seventeen-foot variance opposed to twenty-foot variance. So did you have that surveyed or did you just re-measure it?
Okay, I guess it was, uh, twenty-two and a half feet from the center of the road to the property line.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five.
From the center of the road to the property, not twenty-two and a half. That's, that's where you count that three, extra three feet.
Yeah.
So we are asking for a twenty-five variance. Just want to be clear.
So, yeah, the, uh, the new carport, like I said, will, would cover just the cement area. Um, the roof, what we had planned would come down towards the driveway and the snow and rain would drain onto the, the tarmac here. Uh, this portion has already been removed and then we had to stop construction due to the permitting process and then the variance.
Now, the public hearing portion, do we need anybody here like to speak to this matter? Let's see, anybody raise a hand or?
Uh, was, uh, we did do a two thirty-nine M referral, Mr. Chairman, and it went nine oh in favor, uh, no comments.
Mr. Latham, also, this is a, a two-part. Two-part variance, an A and B. The A portion is all the square footage you have for addition, uh, accessory structures. Can you discuss with the board what you have stored in those accessory structures? So why this is, you know, you need the additional square footage opposed to the size of your house?
The one building. This building here is a one-car garage. And if we added on an addition or an overhang to this garage, for two cars, it would come way out to here probably.
The, the question would be, what is that garage used for?
This one right here?
Yeah.
It's, my classic cars in there.
What's the building next door to that?
This here is, um, just a, a one-room shed. Just for storage. It's pretty much about it. The barn here, um, in this portion here, I keep, uh, my yard equipment, like my lawnmower, a four-wheeler, a motorcycle. And in this part here, it's a two-story. On the bottom floor is, um, I keep all my woodworking stuff in there, you know, a table saw, tools on the wall and stuff like that, and then upstairs is the attic for storage. So this would be, this is that new cement. And this would be the area of the two-car carport.
Well, the twenty-eight hundred square feet that's in our packet, is that the existing structures? Not including this four hundred eighty additional feet?
So you're talking about the? Yeah, so once, if he is allowed to build that additional carport.
Right.
It would come up to twenty hundred and eight, twenty hundred and six feet. His house is existing fifteen hundred and forty-eighty, so.
So right now he has twenty-three hundred square feet of accessory structure.
Twenty-three, twenty-six.
Yeah.
Total, uh, total accessory structures, that's twelve, twelve-ten for the building, nine, uh, I'm sorry, five hundred nineteen for a storage building, two hundred seventy-three for the garage, three twenty-four for the shed, I, I think that's the one.
Were any permits ever vatten for these or use or area?
No, those, those were existing, the house, if you look at the house, you can see on the left side of it, it is expanded, there's a permit for that.
So these are the years we thought so. Nineteen fifty was the garage detached, the machine shed was nineteen seventy, the porch enclosure was eighteen eighty-nine. The machine shed was nineteen hun, no, these are the years, not the square footage, year was nineteen hundred. The machine shed was nineteen seventy, the other was nineteen seventy, the one that Alan was discussing was twenty fifteen. So we have one, the rest of them were before.
The one that was, the two thousand fifteen, which was what?
The house, the expansion of the house.
Six by twenty, twenty fifteen. The rest of them were all pre-dated.
Pre-existing non-conforming accessory.
Right, and then they, like I said, and they did expand the house more, so they came into compliance, but not, or more into compliance, but not completely into compliance.
Since the house is still with the addition at fifteen.
Yep.
Gotcha, thanks.
Yeah, this was the eighty, eighteen eighty-nine house here, the original, and this is what we added on in two thousand sixteen.
Is the existing house within the proper voting?
Yeah. It's only fifty feet.
All right, so the first variance would be for allowing four hundred eighty square feet.
Twelve, twelve hundred and ten square feet over. Not so much over, he is at a hundred percent. Twelve hundred and ten square feet over. Or under.
That's already pre-existing, right? So I guess I'm confused what you're saying.
Some of it's pre-existing.
Right now, we're just asking for the four hundred and eighty additional square feet.
What puts him up over? It's almost twice the size of.
Right. So basically, after today's variance, right, you've got a variance for all those accessory structures.
I wanna live there.
Is, is it actually the twenty-four by twenty addition that you're putting on?
Yes.
Did you go back a couple, where that? Some of that is already there, isn't it?
What we're doing is, this, this part is already gone.
Right.
And so we're just adding.
But that's, what I guess I'm saying is that that overhang structure is already there.
It's gone.
It's gone, but it is already part of.
It was originally, I don't know how much. Yeah, so what, so what you're getting at is, whatever that is, would be actually subtracted off that four hundred eighty. Now, he tore it down before he got a permit, so it went all right.
But that's what I'm saying, this whole area underneath here was actually there, there, so it's not.
Is that half of your building? How big is that roof?
The part that you took off, you don't know how big that is.
Well, it's the, it's the, uh, exactly the, what you see in the cement, the cement area, twenty-four by twenty.
That's what you're putting up, but what I was talking about is the actual roof area that was already there.
Yeah.
So it's slightly wider than the pickup, it's not as long as the pickup, so.
Well, it's not as long as the cement.
So it's like a hundred twenty square feet.
Well, you just chop it in half and measure what's left on that other side. You figure, okay, this way, by this way, it's, this is how much was there and you dumped it from the four eighty.
That's what we just did.
Yeah.
Okay. More members have any comments or questions? I did that. Didn't I break into the record from the county? I closed the public hearing portion of the meeting.
This seems to be similar to what was going on over. Archie Bordeaux? I think it's excessive already. I don't know that I, I know I, I would not agree to add more to the already excessive.
If we do the balancing test, my voice will hold out long enough, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. If the building is there, add on to that existing structure itself.
I think it's most cost-effective.
Yeah. Undesirable changes in neighborhood character to nearby properties. It is most likely going to be an improvement and there really is that much nearby properties. The, the catch-all here is whether the request is substantial and here is already substantial. Yeah, fifty percent over.
With it or?
I mean, already.
Already, yes.
Yeah.
It's twenty-three hundred. That's eight hundred, it's more than fifty percent, sixty percent.
And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects. And I don't see any of those, so that's where we're at.
For the first, for the first variance.
For the first variance.
Okay, if we will.
Anybody?
It's, it's way over, I mean, it's. We could be forgiven.
What happens if he tied this roof and garage into the house?
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing attached to the house, everything's farther away from it, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I'd be three hundred foot attached.
I don't care.
I'm, I'm thinking at least three hundred feet.
Oh, no, I meant one of the, the garage is in the back of the place.
Hundred feet?
I think they're all too far away from the house, they don't attach anything to it. It would be a, it would be a whole new structure that you have to attach to the house, I mean, it'd, it'd be all right.
We didn't wanna take away from the, the character of the property already, because it's been there forever. And we've tried to make improvements staying within that character. If we tore the barn down and replaced it with, let's say, a three-car garage, we would still be over on our accessory buildings, probably even more so.
Well, you wouldn't wanna tear it down because then you'd, because you would be able to build, you'd have to come back for another variance.
And the barn is useful.
And they make a motion. For the square footage over, which, and now we just did somebody on Archie Bordeaux, that we denied that one.
And I had additional lots, though, I think I was.
He had, he had options.
Right, there were three lots or something.
But it was still the square footage of the, the house prior to the monstrosity that he might have.
He, he ended up connecting his existing garage to the house, which then, and he made his, his close garage a little smaller in the past.
Uh, decks do count too, though, correct?
Go back to the beauty of the wall.
It'd be a twelve hundred square foot deck.
So as far as the numbers, I mean, if you go back to saying two-thirds, a third of what, uh, what he's requesting is already there, I think is what we assumed roughly. So that's about three hundred nineteen square feet that he's looking to add. And that adds about thirteen percent more to the overage. That was pre-existing non-conforming. We're looking at, to me, it would be like a thirteen percent added. Variance, even if it's already.
So you're saying that you want to improve the variance?
I'm just giving facts.
The other buildings were all like nineteen hundred.
Yeah, way before.
Way before. I'll make a motion to approve that three hundred.
That was for the first variance, that was a motion to approve for the.
Henry Hill?
No.
Ozzy LaForest?
No.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexandra? Patrick Duhem?
Yes.
Correct, so now we're on a, we are on a number two.
So now talking about setback, twenty-foot encroachment.
Twenty foot.
Accessory structure in the front yard.
Right.
There's the pre-existing structures already.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah, it was twenty-seven feet, because he's extending it out seven feet, so it's twenty-seven feet.
So that's, the mat comes out seven and a half feet from the existing structure, is that what the measurement's on? Okay, thanks.
Open up the public hearing portion of the meeting for this variance, anybody here like to speak to that? Nobody raises their hand, we'll quote the public hearing portion of the meeting, 'cause we already read the original into the record from the county. Then, we're looking at, how many? Twenty?
Twenty, twenty feet.
Twenty foot.
Yeah.
Twenty foot variance.
Yeah. But we've already.
It's already pre-existing.
Yeah.
Twenty-three feet.
Yeah.
Or, I'm sorry, thirteen feet.
Well, the approach.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Show of hands on that one.
I'll second.
Somebody, roll call though.
Henry Hale?
Yes.
Blazlo Leforis?
Yes.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Marian Alexandra? Patrick Duhan?
Yes.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it all.
Please, please don't add any more.
We don't, we don't feel good when somebody's got a leaky character.
Well, what you see there, you know, with the carport, and all that dirt now is all grass. Citing on it next year, that's citing lead a green with black trim. God bless you.
I'll sign anything else.
Thank you.
Come in next week, we'll finalize everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next appeal, we have three and one, we're gonna start with, uh, appeal hopefully. Uh, twenty-three thirty-one, C I D C, on behalf of Glassberg LLC, Industrial Boulevard. Uh, this is three people, and when I say three people, we'll explain it pretty once we get in here, request on behalf of C I D C, Glassberg LLC. On behalf of BBL Construction, located on Industrial Boulevard, part of tax parcel two twenty-one three one, to be allowed, one, A, to construct a new career technical education workforce train facility set at eight hundred and seventy-three feet from the front profit line, which would increase the maximum thirty-foot requirement of setback by eight hundred and thirty, what is not allowed in a T-six town center district, B, to have two rows of front yard parking spaces, forty-seven total spots, when no front yard parking spaces are allowed in a T-six district, area variance in Article XIX, Article Two, Town Center, T-six A, building setbacks and front yard parking. Uh, that was a lot, so we're gonna start with that one before we go to the two other ones. Uh, Brett's got what was submitted to us, we can go over that quickly.
So, this is the Oakland County Airport here, this is the end of Ruger Street, military turnpike along through here, this is the proposed area to be built on. You'll see that it's in the TC, T-six district. This is an aerial view, again, parcels are not broken out yet, as they don't exist, so it would be in this general area here. And then there are some plans provided by Mr. Ovias. Sorry. Now, this is a picture of today from the newly constructed traffic circle shooting onto the property, which would be where access would be gained from. Mr. Ovias has also provided us an elevation drawings, which I'm sure he will be going over, and a nice view of the building.
Go back with the.
About this one or the one?
One more forward, I guess, or start with that one, that's fine, sorry. Give me a sec.
Right there.
Stop. I'm done.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Aaron Ovias, Officer Robert of Southern, Brandon Stabler, here representing, uh, BBL or. Bosse's is looking to basically, can be quick over here, uh, build a new campus. They're looking to, uh, construct a new roughly a hundred twenty thousand square foot building on a seven-taker parcel here, that's a looking purchase from the county. Uh, the area is zoned T-six for the most part, that lines is about here. Uh, and in building a school in a T-six district, it's a little unique, it's allowed use. Uh, but because of the way the law is configured, uh, we have that new traffic circle that Brett showed here. We are looking to extend that road with our development, uh, coming in the site several hundred feet, so that we would have adequate frontage, uh, for us and also the neighboring parcels, and would allow the project to be approvable for the frontage, uh, and access at that point. But we do have some design requirements at T-six zone, so T-six zone was kind of established as a transition zone between the commercial residential, where they see it more as kind of the neighborhood commercial stores, where the buildings are set up to be within ten feet or thirty feet of the front yard. So the idea is the buildings are front, the idea is you're supposed to cover up most of your frontage with the building, have a driveway that goes around back to the parking, so parking has to be in the rear. Uh, every building's supposed to be two stories with a pitched roof. Well, that's great if we're in that walking neighborhood, but we're building a school, so that makes those, you know, design requirements a little difficult. Because this parcel is freestanding with its frontage off of the new road, that means our building would have to be placed, you know, way on this end. And obviously, because we're trying to expand the campus, so you have the existing structures here, uh, and the new building here, so if we go to the two more slides forward, please. Uh, so as we look at the new structure here, in close proximity existing parking fields, existing structures here, zoning tells me my building has to be way over here. So again, that's why we're looking to put the building here on the other end of the property, so that is one of the variances that we have. In talking with the planning department, they have asked that we keep in mind that, you know, one day Ruger Street will be extended. This kind of helps define our narrative to the request, so the idea is that Ruger Street would be extended at some future date, also tie into that traffic circle. So what that did is, you know, they've asked us to reserve, and it's kind of dashed here, is a future driveway out, and what we did is in our request, based on the plan comments, is consider that front yard also. So it's not front yard yet, because there's no road there, but plan had asked us to consider that, which meant this parking would be in the front yard if Ruger Street was extended. The question, I guess, becomes is whether Code's Office determines whether or not, or if the board determines whether or not to consider this really frontage, because it's not until such time that a road is built. So right now, our only frontage is over here, so whether or not we need that variance for parking in a future front yard or not, whether it's in the side yard under the current condition, therefore it's allowed use, it doesn't need a variance, that's something we can talk about.
The other part that I'm gonna add is that road's not built, so there's not, frontage's there, or that's not a road front, so there's no connection to a road, so it's a two eighty-eight. So there's two parts of the component, we give two eighty-eights, but that little blacked-out area right up there next to the little box, that road is not constructed. There is no road leading to this right now, so the quandary is, do you give a two eighty-eight, because it, and it's, I'll be quite honest, the town is a public partner relationship of building a road, but the road's not there, so you can't give something that's not there. Even though we are partners, and I say we, what is, I'm gonna throw the, the town, and Aaron can correct me, the town, county, TDC. Is there anybody else that's pitching in on that that I don't know of, to build future road, but right now, that part is not a town road.
Okay, we can consider it, future, future. So we can expand on that. Right, so.
We gave two eighty-eight.
Yeah, so as we, right, and to quickly expand on that, the road was constructed, it was a joint venture between the town of Glassberg, the Development Corp, and the county. They built the roads, they hired Luck Brothers to build it, it is fully done, as you saw from the photos, there is an issue with the light fixtures. So the light fixtures that respect by the town, or by the county's engineer, are not the light fixtures that the town and Public Highway Department wants. So until the light fixtures get replaced, the town is not willing to accept ownership of that roadway, so it does not exist as a road yet. It will hopefully very shortly. So we fully understand that until such time that that happens, this frontage doesn't exist. And to further that, the T-six zone is right, is a dash line right here, so this is all T-six. From here to here is S-D. In T-six, I need fifty feet of road frontage, which the town's right away seventy-five, therefore I'm good, but because I'm in the S-D zone, I actually need a hundred feet of frontage, so I don't have that. So we have been discussing that with council planning, and we fully acknowledge that if that road isn't dedicated, we need to basically come back to for either a two eighty-eight, because the road hasn't been dedicated yet, but it will be, you're kind, you're bridging a gap of fixing some light fixtures, uh, or a variance for seventy-five feet frontage, instead of a hundred feet of frontage in S-D zone, so we acknowledge that there is one more step that we have to come forward for you. But obviously, you know, when the project is constructed, we will be extending the town road several hundred feet into our property, so we would then have adequate frontage, along with the neighboring lots all have adequate frontage, so it's, again, similar to what you did with FedEx. It's not that you're trying, you're granting a variance for, live forever, you're just kind of bridging the gap, you know, until things are actually constructed and dedicated. So tonight, what we're looking at are, you know, the question of, if this is not a roadway, that negates the need for two of the requests, one of which is this parking, if it's in a front road or not. And then that fifty-foot development, meaning if your building's supposed to be fifty feet of your lot, if you look at the north-south direction, we are wide enough, but if you look at the east-west, if this be a future road, we're not wide enough. So again, if this is not a road, it negates those, but we still have the issues of the secondary building, which is agricultural and veterinary services, is a one-story building, building's supposed to be two. The main building is two stories, so we're shy for there, but we don't have a pitched roof. So tonight, what we're looking at are, I guess, first question would be, is if the board feels that we do not need to consider this frontage, because it's not a road yet, then we can move forward with, one, the building being more than thirty feet from the property line, a one-story structure, and a pitched roof. Fully acknowledging that we still have the issue here to deal with next step, and really what's happening is, is there are funding sources that are significantly helping this project, and those come with some conditions, and one of the conditions is we need to break ground before December thirty-first, so that's why we are looking here tonight, 'cause we are still actively pursuing, and up until the point that the frontage issue and the town not taking ownership of the road with the light fixtures at this point, we were hoping to be here tonight, to get the variances next week to do the planning. Planning has already done all the seeker, because there's a type-one action, so they had to seeker, so seeker's closed out, so now we're in front of you tonight for these requests, obviously, we need to come up with a solution there, or request to come back to you next month, to hopefully get approval next month.
You're just trying to kill us, or what?
Trying to give you the overall view, and then, obviously, because, right, the way we have, you know, before we used to do one variant for the whole project, they are broken up into each individual one, so that's why it's, you have multiple requests in front of you, because each variance is its own request.
Mr. Chairman, I'm thinking, uh, warning today, look at this and say, first of all, you gotta approve the lot, which is the frontage, so you probably need to take a determination of what's gonna be frontage, that then allows him to re-figure what variances need. So, in my opinion, to me, would be, everything else gets taped, make a determination, tell him what he's gonna do, he's gonna apply for either area variance or two eighty-eight next month, along with, now we look at all the rest of them, once one of those two gets approved. But to prove site plan variances before the lot, is even, and the frontage is even approved, put the cart before the horse.
Well, I mean, there's, there's nothing to say in looking at overall development projects, when you need multiple variances, there's nothing to say that you have to approve all those variances in the same night. So we can legally, we may weigh in, you know, development projects, development projects, it's all conditioned, we know if you get the variances, the area variances for the development projects as proposed, the subject upon us satisfying the other conditions and satisfying all the other steps that we have to, so, you know, we don't see an issue of considering these variances tonight, knowing that you have more, you know, the concern is, you know, we also don't want to, there's a lot of steps, you know, and then overloading you next month, and then if we have a concern next month, does that push us November, so it's kind of allowing it.
But they go away, doesn't the, the, I'm sorry, the A?
Two, two variants would go away.
The A and the bigger, no, the A would go away if the subdivision was completed, correct?
A of?
Uh, two thirty-three-one A. One, if, like Alan just said, if the.
The setback in the parking?
No.
No, A.
The setback still.
The setback would still apply.
Right, it's B portion of it.
It would be the parking and the front yard if Ruger Street extension is considered a side yard, if Ruger Street does not exist.
Right, subdivision, same way we did the subdivision, we revert back to FedEx, we did two eighty-eight because the road wasn't built.
We're just sort of guessing.
But the other ones, I, I, Alan, safer discussion is that the other ones, what would be the, the drawback of, I, maybe I missed it, of the flat roof and then not considering the flat roof?
If you, if you consider the flat roof, uh, the flat roof, the one-story.
Roof design.
You're, you're approving a variance on a site plan if the lot doesn't exist.
Which, I mean, if FedEx.
It doesn't exist until you get a two eighty-eight from us, or.
It doesn't exist until you actually file the deal.
You can't, you can't go forward with a final plan of that subdivision until you give him one of those two variances, or he rerates that and makes it more, uh, frontage on the road.
Or does it all of the remainder lands?
Well, no, I think it's the others, it's the, the planning board cannot approve a subdivision until you grant all of the necessary variances.
Why? Creating that, that subdivision has nothing to do with your.
Absolutely, that law.
Or anything else, it only has to do with the, uh, the frontage setbacks.
It has, lack, doesn't have a hundred feet of frontage.
Right, so we, so they can't approve subdivision based off of that, that's it.
Right, so.
So the slip of your roof and a setback of your building doesn't have anything to do with the subdivision being approved, that's the site plan thing. So there's two sets of, there's two sets of variances, there's a subdivision variance, which you don't have yet, and because you haven't applied for it yet, and there's a site plan.
Right.
You can't, you can't, you usually don't get stuff done with a subdivision approved.
But you can grant approval for a site plan without subdivision.
If you turn around and say, no, to subdivision, the lot doesn't exist, they can't do the site plan, they have to re, redesign everything.
So we're. If you say no to the roof and this, then subdivision all the way, I mean, you need both of them.
No, you can still, that, that's gonna stop you from subdividing that property, when, when it comes to the, uh.
Somebody else can build something on it that'll comply at the, at subdivision.
I can't build on it, I can't do my proposed development.
Yeah, the project, it's all one project, right, obviously, the, the only reason C I D C is the applicant i- is for this project, and so under seeker, the planning board has reviewed the entire project, so it's not to segment, you know, different portions, and the seeker determination has been made for subdivision, site plan, all the environmental impacts, so I think, considering the project as a whole, it won't go forward, C I D C won't, you know, pursue this unless the whole, the whole project is, is approved, and I think to kind of just piggyback on, actually, Mr. Reese, what you said before, is we're still, so the county is the seller of the property, and, um, it's obviously, you know, for Bosse's. Where, one of the things that we're having discussions with is, 'cause we weren't really sure if we were gonna need this two eighty-eight variance, at the time, we missed the fact that it was the S-D and the T-six, and we were only looking at T-six, 'cause that's where the building is gonna go, and we thought, oh, we only need fifty feet of frontage, and we got seventy-five with this new road, you know, once it's built, so now that, that this was actually just brought up, I think, a week or two ago, we, we're, we wanna, we wanna move this forward in the most expeditious way possible, Bosse's got some grants that they're, that they've applied for, that they've been awarded, and the building has gotta be done by a certain time, and it takes time to build it, so we're discussing with the county, perhaps change in the subdivision, so that we do get to that hundred feet of frontage in the S-D, just to kind of, again, bridge the gap, because at the end of the day, we're gonna have over four hundred feet of frontage on this, once we build the road, and that's part of the C I D C project, is a commitment to build that three hundred eighty-six feet of road extension, so.
But it's not built, and the subdivision's not done.
Right.
So that's the problem with this board, is you're asking them to approve something that doesn't exist.
Well, it's the same thing with FedEx.
But they ask for a two eighty-eight.
Yes, so that's what I'm saying, Mr.
It's whether, I'm saying this, whether you do that all in one night, or whether we do some tonight, or we do some next, but it all, it, it, the catch is that the point. or whether we do some tonight, or we do some next month, it all, it, it, the catch is that the planning board can't move forward with fuck, you know, fuck of the approval of the subdivision, or approval of the site plan, unless you grant all the variances. So whether that means I come to you one night, come to you three nights, come to you seven nights, I gotta get all of that in the row before I go back to the planning board and they give us approval for the site and subdivision, because it is one action. Because obviously, we're not gonna move forward with the subdivision if I can't do the site, and I'm not gonna do the site if I can't do subdivision.
I understand what you're saying, and really what should be first, first is a two-eighty-eight.
Correct.
And, and that's what.
Because it's the one thing that will allow us to create that lot.
But you're not creating a lot by granting a variance.
No, the precedence, what we go, what I'm going back to, what maybe Alan is, was FedEx, that we had letters saying that it is the bridge of the gap of S-D to the other zone, and it's fifty. The fifty-foot then would be achieved if the subdivision went back past that property line.
If it went into the T-six, yeah.
This way, into the property line. So there is two ways, what they're saying, there's two ways to go about it, two-eighty-eight, extending it. And if it was, if Aaron says like this, the lights and everything else are done and taken care of, and then the six extension, but cracking around, the road wouldn't be done, right, it would just be then a subdivision showing lands going across with the intent, the same way we did with FedEx saying, that the fire chief said that it is adequate access.
So we are, right, so what's different is, so, like, when you saw FedEx, they got a two-eighty-eight because they were building. Time to go home, we better go.
The other thing is, though, is that I don't think we had T-six zone.